All right, good evening. Welcome to the December thirteenth meeting of the Planning Commission for City of Beaumont. We'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock if I get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Southard.
Here.
Commissioner Cooley.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Chairman Smith.
Here. All right, do we have any requests of excused absence tonight? All right, if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, right hand of your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
No adjustments to the agenda.
Okay, do we have any conflicts of interest to disclose? Hearing none. Item B, public comment period for items not on the agenda. This meeting will be open to the public and conducted in a virtual format to be inclusive of all participation preferences. Public comment participation is encouraged by emailing any comments to the city clerk's office or by calling in using the phone number provided on the front of the agenda. Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda tonight?
There are no written comments. Rudy, do we have any callers on the line?
I have no callers on the line.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C, C one is approval of the minutes. Do we have any comments or a motion for the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
A second.
Your motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Southard.
Hi.
Commissioner Cooley.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Chairman Smith.
Yes. All right, item C two, the downtown Beaumont revitalization plan update, staff report, please.
I'm gonna let the economic development manager Kyle Warsinski introduce this.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the planning commission. So before you tonight is some work that we've as staff and our consultant that city council hired has been working on for better part of a year now. And as you likely know, the city of Beaumont has a element within its general plan for downtown area plan and that encompasses the vision that council had set forth for the redevelopment of a thriving pedestrian-friendly, active downtown area. And last year, about November, December of last year, city council awarded a contract to GHD to create this revitalization implementation plan for the downtown area. And the goal, the main goals of that plan were to analyze and fully understand the physical environment and the regulatory needs, city objectives, using citizen and stakeholder desires to create that plan. And we would establish specific goals, strategies, implementation steps to get us from where we're at right now is what I call point A, right, the very beginning, to, I wouldn't say point B, it's almost like point Z. So how to get us through a ten to fifteen year planning effort to get us to have that downtown that's thriving and is active and so forth. And the contract was provided to GHD. They've done a couple different workshops and visiting sessions with the downtown businesses and have been meeting with staff every other week for the better part of a year now. And what I wanted to do is have GHD provide you guys with an update as they near getting into plan development, the actual, the document itself and presentation of that to the city council. So I'm gonna go ahead and kick it off to Jonathan Linkus from GHD to run through the presentation. And then also Todd Tredenza is on Zoom. He wasn't able to be here today, but he'll be able to work with Jonathan on the presentation. So I'll kick it over to them. Thank you.
And I just want to confirm, Todd, can we hear your voice?
Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
All right.
Nice. Great, so thank you all for your time. And as Kyle just mentioned, this is the second workshop in front of this group as well as post the second workshop with the public where we reviewed most of this content. So I'll be brief, my name is again Jonathan Linkus, Todd Tredenza. Linda Congleton, also not here, is our real estate consultant working with us and the city to identify the demand and the capacity of these sites for that revitalization. Most of these slides you've seen, but it's important to quickly go over them. We remind ourselves of our priorities, which is downtown oriented around small businesses, community and pedestrian safety, and the support for events and overall our competitiveness in a kind of cultural and economic sphere of inland empire. How does this plan get us there? Remember, we are building upon the general plan as well as reviewing and incorporating recommendations from the parking management plan. And all of this ties those together in the form of more implementable designs. And we're here today to show you some of those designs. Just to remind you, our scope generally colloquially can be described as assessing the carrying capacity of downtown with sites available or underutilized today. Looking at zoning, streetscapes, we're providing some site plans, some of which you're about to see. Assessing parking and looking at public realm, new street designs. And we're gonna wrap up with some architectural guidelines and signage that are yet to come and putting that together in a governance guidance document that really is yet to add some implementation order of events. That's kind of the last thing we need to add to this after this meeting. And the city can use this really to look at how the plan can be implemented. So this enriches in details what you already have on the books in your general plan, chapter eleven. We're about two-thirds through this process. This is the last meeting with this group. After this, we'll do some workshops with city council with the complete document that will additionally include that timeline or Gantt chart of CIP steps. This is the vision statement from the general plan and it's always good to review because it emphasizes the role of downtown as a pedestrian-friendly environment. That has been the goal all along. A balance and integrated mix of residential office and retail that benefits from a pedestrian sphere and an increase in the amount of public space use of our streets and off-street as well, plazas and pocket parks. This is stuff that you've also heard about to date. There is an emphasis from the public voting in both workshops imaged on the right here that preferences shaded outdoor space, on and off streets, gateway landscape improvements that also comport with a setting that's right for monthly fairs and events is where the city, the community wants to see their downtown go. Again, pedestrian safety, access and facilities, their comfort on the street is important. Looking at alleys as parking facilities that are more formalized and cleaned up, potentially some public art back there. And then they said they are comfortable with limited mixed use, one to two stories, something a little denser than today, and those are some of the images you're about to see. And then looking at unpacking the design you have on the books for that median parking concept where the middle of the street is used on Sixth for a future parking scenario. So let's get right to it. Downtown streetscape concepts are something that we are taking from the general plan and expanding as planned illustratives to show how it would work. And that's part of our responsibility in illustrating this revitalization. The plan is diagrammed here and Todd Tredenza, I and his team have worked closely to not only develop this strategically as you see here, but also detail this with curbs, parallel parking scenario, and how many street trees can we get? And what's important is that we have added the idea of a roundabout as gateways at California and Palm streets, flanking or bookending the Sixth Street improvement. And that facilitates movement as it transitions from four to two lanes or two lanes with a left turn lane at the heart of downtown. That actually increases flow rate through those intersections when they need to convert to that two-travel lane mode. The hatched area in this diagram is important for you because that is the segment in front of city hall where we have been instructed by your general plan to explore that median parking concept. Also, there is a pedestrian improvement on Beaumont Avenue as well that includes two travel lanes. So let's start on Beaumont Avenue. That's the more straightforward roadway improvement. This is a two-travel lane concept with buffered bike lane and parallel parking throughout the corridor all the way up to our study area limit, I believe, at Twelfth Street. And this concept includes room just enough for a four or five-foot parkway strip. And that includes a more consistent or accommodates a more consistent street tree pattern, which is very important to the imageability and pedestrian comfort of downtown. This is good for businesses. What's really important here also to note in that drawing is the pedestrian bumpouts. This is the preferred tool in our public voting for safety enhancement. Crossing these streets is tough, it's dangerous, and you have to look at four travel lanes to make your crossing. In this scheme, you have just as much throughput and you allow pedestrians to safely cross a distance that's almost half as much. So those refuges, those pedestrian bumpouts are the main enhancement there. And they don't impact the parallel parking. In fact, our design accommodates all curb cuts and increases the parallel parking supply for Beaumont. We've made a suggestion or recommendation of colored concrete at crossings with Sixth Street and at key intersections as an increasing role for a destination in downtown. Some concrete enhancements or design enhancements are possibly worth exploring further. It's also worth noting that in this intersection of our future Beaumont Avenue and Sixth Street, we're showing left turn lanes and turn pockets for right turn movements as well. So even though we're looking at two travel lanes, all of our intersections allow that right turn movement. Those cars can get out of the way and get to other parts of downtown. A more advanced or innovative streetscape is what we're looking at for Sixth Street. And so the, in the illustration at the bottom here, it's important to note that you're seeing a custom-designed roundabout. And that roundabout is, serves as a gateway to downtown, a transition into the travel lane configuration that is the heart of Sixth Street. And you can see on the right side of that illustration at the bottom, that's the intersection with Beaumont Avenue. It includes several turning pockets. And this segment is not, this is according to the general plan right now. So this is what you've got on the books. And when we explore that at its fullest and add those pedestrian bumpouts or curb extensions, if you will, that's the pedestrian enhancement we have provided to that design. We are looking at the possibility of exploring an alternative to this that is similar with two travel lanes and a left turn lane that allows for trucks to stop in the middle of the night, make a delivery, but also for those left turning movements into existing small business curb cuts. It's important to note that on this segment, this curb design provides access to all curb cuts for each business. We're not cutting anybody off or overly relying on the alley. And here you can see it up close, there's parallel parking shown in addition to the parkway. So in summary, the design you have on the books, it all fits. And it's really important to not underestimate the role of street trees changing the imageability and function of downtown as a place to be, as a place to spend money, to dine, to walk, to visit multiple businesses, not just swing through to visit your tax, you know, agent. This is the close-in of the custom-designed roundabout. We've designed for the intersection of California and Sixth. Currently, this is a traffic light, everybody stops. With a design like this, cars and trucks are able to pass through at, you know, basically after a yield. And most of the time, that's without stopping. Pedestrians are safer as they have a refuge and are pulled back from that travel interaction at the yield line. And the apron at the middle of the island allows for those larger trucks and towed loads to basically cheat the curve and make the turning radius that they need, fire trucks included. So the design accommodates most of the travel demand you have today. We believe this design was predicated by some initial modeling prior to this design to show that this kind of roundabout is suitable for this current travel demand. A design like this is already tested and proven in our neighboring competitors up in Ucaipa. They've made a beautiful downtown gateway with landscape improvements. They're able to present the image and identity of their community through island sculpture. The gateway and all of these elements are something we're gonna draft as a kit of parts in elevation as a kind of signage chapter at the end of this plan. But this shows the kind of image that you can get out of these kind of streetscape improvements that are also safety improvements. So here's the heart of the machine. This is Sixth Street in front of city hall from California to Palm. And at the other end, you can see that roundabout. This is a design on the books, it's a conversion from four travel lanes to two. And this total transformation was supported by the voting in both of our last public workshops. And those workshops were attended mostly by business owners that operate on this street. So what's really important is that this supports a lot of the kind of cultural and community anchors of the civic center and its future uses, new businesses that might infill on the street. And more, most importantly, it's a design that is specifically intended to support events that would be on the street. This type of alignment of the trees and their light standards in the middle can be used to space out vendor stalls, parking for those vendors. You can close one half of the street and maintain a one-direction movement and a kind of one-way coupling. There's a lot you can do for pedestrians. When you don't have an affair or event, the public is parking there to visit businesses. And it's worth noting that when you provide parking in the middle of the street, you're able to provide more spaces because they're not having to be inserted between curb cuts that access these businesses. So you get a little more out of it. This again is proven nearby in Southern California. We've emphasized Lancaster Boulevard in Lancaster, California as a success story that we hope to emulate. Fifteen mile-per-hour speeds allow enough throughput to support downtown density and activity. The public parking scheme allows all businesses to grow and intensify without having an impact on their site planning. And overall, it really is a cultural transformation of downtown into a place for people and events. This is an example of their weekly farmer's market and sort of craft fair. They also close it for larger events on a monthly basis. So all of that public realm streetscape accompanies improvements that we intend to see coupled to them in the private realm. So the next segment of this presentation is a view of one of each kind of development that we would hope to or anticipate seeing in downtown in the next ten to fifteen years. And this is on the basis of two major inputs, one of which is Linda Congleton's economic and real estate analysis. And that analysis looks at the development potential on the basis of housing starts and existing population as well as regional economic performance for all around downtown, excuse me, all of the city and really the whole valley, where that demand lies and how many restaurants can you expect in the confines of our study area? Restaurants, businesses and housing. Additionally, the second input are vacant sites or underutilized sites, buildings for sale, buildings that are unoccupied but maybe standing, and looking at what is the development potential without dislodging any success stories in businesses we have today. So let's get right to the numbers. Both the design and the demand were balanced to match the land available, the economic forecast, and what is really feasible with development types that developers prefer putting on the ground today. And that perspective comes from our own experience working with private developers and Linda's, which is extensive. We both have matched a design and a demand for about ninety to ninety-five dwelling units for the downtown area. This does not include the additional housing that would feed this economically from outside of downtown. That's just within this area. And there's economic room in addition to renovations that would backfill and revitalize buildings and cash registers and existing dining. Fourteen, about twelve to fourteen new restaurants could be supported with population projections and housing starts over a ten to fifteen-year period just on downtown, that Sixth Street in Beaumont. So in order to see that through, we have to imagine what do the buildings look like? What fits all of this? The first type that we are looking at today is the most new type to Beaumont Avenue, but not uncommon around Southern California, and that's a mixed-use infill building type. This is what I would consider a small mixed-use project. This was actually inspired in our explorations by conversations with business-owning stakeholders in our interview process as a part of our scope. A couple of them said, you know what, if I had, you know, my neighbor's lot and a little more space and I had, you know, permission in the code, I would put up a two-story building with some studios on top. This is where I already see market from friends and I'm really ready to explore this kind of development. So as I just mentioned, this is studios and one bedrooms over probably one to two restaurant or retail businesses. At this size, you probably need to take the full width of a block between two side streets, probably on Sixth Street. These buildings are typically two to three stories maximum. We're projecting a building no more than two stories on Sixth Street based on demand and space available. And it's been up to us to see where does that fit in the revitalization picture. One opportunity we see in the long term is from California to Edgar Avenue on Sixth Street. A building like this, it's two stories, it's not that far out of scope. I think the dwelling units per acre might be a little high for this, but we're only looking at, I believe, twenty-five residential units in a building like this. And they're small, they're studios or one bedrooms. You fit to restaurants or retail businesses on the ground floor and most of the parking demand for most days is accommodated on that site plan right there. What's important is that we looked at for a peak demand, let's say a weekend before Christmas, like we have before us today, there may be a retail peak that might push five to seven cars out on that streetscape parking, parallel parking in the front. And there may be additional demand for the retail, not the residents, off-site in a public lot nearby. And so we've identified some potential alley-adjacent vacant sites where some limited public parking could be supplied to supplement and enable a project like this. And that's also key. How does the parking work? But most of the time, residents' employees would fit in that parking lot based on the standards we use as planners. The other type for slightly smaller sites, some of which still need to be some lot merging, two to three lots, is a mini-mixed-use infill, basically a junior version of what you just saw. And this is again one-bedroom or studio units above a food and beverage play that is owner, not owner-occupied, but small independent restaurant, not a chain most likely. It's a downtown infill type that's common in, you know, low-density American downtowns. A lot of the images I'm seeing here are probably from the southeast. And again, these are common in the US. You hit Google search, image search, a lot of this is happening. It was easy to find images like this. You probably again need two to three merged lots and they're two to three stories maximum. A smaller building like this might need some accommodation for some tuck-under parking. It's important to check in on our code to make sure that's accommodated as next steps in our plan. Here's an example of that drawn on a site across from city hall. And what a transformation that would be to have a cafe across the street, walking through the pedestrian refuge of a median-parked pedestrian-oriented streetscape lined with street trees. This is the kind of downtown that residents have long demanded through the general plan and voting process and is, comports with the goals of safety and throughput volume on the street. Another type we've looked at is retail with housing adjacent to each other on a mixed site. And this is an infill potential we see up on Beaumont Avenue at Eighth Street. We really enjoy visiting up there because of the existing trees in the private realm. These elms and oaks are the perfect setting for something not unlike this precedent. At the top here, I believe that's from Louisville, Texas. Small, independent, owner-occupied restaurants with outdoor dining is where a lot of restaurateurs would like to go in a casual dining setting that they own. And this is great for small businesses that I've started up and have room to grow or need room to grow. Small homes in an environment like this, as exemplified below, are already common in Southern California. This is a thousand to fourteen hundred square feet. And what you're seeing below is a six or eight-pack, as we call it in the development world. This is something that fits on the vacant land between Euclid and Beaumont at Eighth. And this is basically a site plan capacity study that shows itself parked. This would actually put no cars on the public realm. And this is how you get eight units on that alley access or from the Euclid stub end or curb cut in the middle of that site. So again, this is another one where restaurateurs want to own their rooftop. They want outdoor dining, they want a casual setting, they want their own parking. This is the kind of site that they would enjoy operating. And this is the kind of stuff that would really draw people to spend more time in the evening in downtown. I think it's really important to pivot now to some really important true revitalization projects that are city-accelerated. These are projects that transform downtown because they are unlocked by the city's involvement and role in partnership with landowners and in activating some of your own public realm. So there are two that we're going through today. They are Grace Avenue Gateway Project. And that includes a street-side dining play along Grace Avenue. So most of you are familiar with the site. This includes the laundromat and the historic city hall from nineteen thirteen. So again, the catalyst here is our recognition that Grace Avenue with its cul-de-sac near Fifth Avenue, or excuse me, Fifth Street, has changed role. It now provides access to one parking lot and that's for Ramona's. And it's worth noting that Ramona's has attended both of our workshops and they are really in favor of this kind of environment around their restaurant. And the leverage the city has is the ownership of the historic buildings. I believe there's some discussion about the laundromat and of course, there's the historic city hall. And Linda Congleton has really advised us that it's restaurants and cafes that are the best use for those buildings. That's where demand is right now in addition to housing for other sites. And the spin-off that you get from really transforming Grace Avenue to a pedestrian environment, organizing parking, making pedestrians feel welcome in the streetscape to communicate between those different buildings, the spin-off is that you create a pedestrian environment at the gateway to downtown. The spin-off is that you create a a pedestrian environment at the gateway to downtown, next to that roundabout. And you can activate this on a weekly basis with, you know, you can close the street. There's ample parking on Fifth in our analysis, uh, where you could like put up some market stalls, have a DJ or a band, do an outdoor event on warm summer nights on Grace Avenue. This is low impact because it's employment during the day and it's unoccupied at night and you're not near housing. So there's a lot you can do with a lot of the city-owned assets here. And here's a site plan of what that would look like. Grace Avenue repaved would be um, perhaps a flush curb that's welcoming to pedestrians and slows traffic speeds, provides access still to Ramona's uh parking need on that side of their building. Uh, we've talked to them and they have an ambition to either use public realm or private realm uh patio dining to expand their operation to an outdoor setting. And this is the kind of design it takes to link together in a, in a walking environment, the city-owned assets of of the, I guess, the laundromat and the um, of course, the historic City Hall. Um, what's important to note is the connection of this to the public realm at the roundabout. So the idea here is that you're creating synergy between a transformed street, um, a a better utilized Grace Avenue public realm for a park-like setting. And that is the kind of outdoor dining, off-street environment that the public has requested through their voting to us. And this design shows how you're putting shade, street trees, buffering from the street, places for, you know, bike parking for those who live not too far away, and a place to park on Fifth or Grace Avenue if you're coming to like visit two of these locations, getting dinner at Ramona's and ice cream in the historic laundromat building. These are, these are the things that link together and create that revitalization synergy. Uh, another concept that we've explored that is uh probably a little further out, but is really gonna make the best use of city-owned lands, the highest and best use, is a civic center town square and event plaza. And this includes a lot of existing uh proposals that are already on the books or at play. And of course, they depend on the the new police station moving to their campus location that's currently being explored. And that um opens up the the city's leverage in this uh uh concept, which is a lot of publicly owned land for potential commercial enhancement to downtown. And uh, we would have to, of course, maintain support for current demand and public parking need um that exists today. This uh would connect with the city's uh long-term intent to potentially use this building for more community center-like events or or uses. And there has been a suggestion or exploration that other buildings on this civic center campus could support more City Hall functions. So all of that put together with a plaza uh design that has been um uh prepared for the city, uh, create a holistic environment, um, that includes community center, public parking, uh, potential retail. And um, of course, that uh use for events that might be on Orange Avenue or Sixth Street. All of this is um, we're comfortable discussing because other cities have done it. Uh, the example in the bottom right is Louisville, Texas. And that it was a city-owned parking lot where they uh partnered with, they, I believe they ground leased it to a retail developer who operated it for a number of years, and then I believe it was sold off to be owner occupied by restaurateurs that uh continue to operate today in three restaurant buildings on what was once city public parking. The back of that site still publicly accessible alley parking. Um, the top right image, oh, is worth noting, that's the camp in Orange County. That's the kind of scale of retail buildings. That's a highly pedestrian oriented environment in an outdoor site, similar size. Um, so here's a composite image that includes a lot of what we've all uh seen before. That includes the plaza design. You've had at least on your books or in your hands for some time. Um, that's hybridized to incorporate some additional public parking on Magnolia. Um, you have uh a coordinated use of the annex and City Hall building on either side of that plaza. And the main proposal here from Linda, who is the expert in the retail economics of this, is that you use the frontage along Sixth Street to ground lease or or sell off to a retail uh operator for three to four restaurant buildings that basically provides the most, the highest and best economic use for the revitalization of Sixth Street as a downtown corridor. Um, if we do this, we have to provide enough parking to support those uses. And if we're doing that, we still need to consider the about a hundred or so parking spaces that we currently need out there for park and ride visitors to Civic Center, especially when we have a plaza with events. And so our recommendation there is a parking deck in this top right um, uh rectangle of parking here. And so we've scaled that to be about the size of a a single parking deck, not unlike you see in downtown Redlands. That would be a long-term instrument to this uh proposal. So um, I make a brief mention of the fact that we've gone through a parking analysis to kind of verify um, the feasibility of all of this, the streetscapes, the individual projects. And in that design, we have confirmed that the streetscape concepts uh mostly accommodate future parking demand. And of course, we know today that we have a currently enough parking for current demand. Um, we've uh made some high-level recommendations about that at the end of this three-slide segment here. Um, that might supplement the on-street parking strategy, and those are um uh, familiar to us if we've read the parking management plan. We largely approve of its recommendations. Um, we've made some safe, conservative assumptions about uh ridership uh of transit and uh shared parking. So these are, we're comfortable with these numbers. And we are accommodating against civic center uses and uh the continued use of park and ride in the public uh parking facilities. So this gr- diagram is available to you. I won't explore it too deeply, but I'll make note of two things. One of them is that we've ensured a parking balance for those colored businesses in that map along the streetscape. Those are the areas where we've made a spreadsheet, listed demand, and proved the capacity on the street for both Beaumont and independently Sixth Street. Another thing to note for this uh planning commission is that the orange dotted lines around both the Grace Avenue project here and the Civic Center, as well as a few of these other private developments, those are areas within which there is a parking balance for the needs of that future development. So those don't push a lot of additional parking onto the street. That streetscape is still available to neighboring businesses. So our our job is to show it fits, and that's what those uh dotted lines are important for in our discussion. In summary, uh, looking at the parking impact of all of these proposals, um, in the near term, it's important to to maximize on-street parking uh at Fifth and also Wellwood for some of those denser employers to protect that parallel parking and to coordinate with residents to ensure that employees and residents uh have that available to them. That's not an issue today. It it shouldn't be an issue in the future. Um, uh, striping in a demonstration project may be the way to ease into these radical changes to Sixth Street, both the roundabout and the the center median parking. We can um devise some of those uh demonstration projects for you as an implementation if you wish. Um, but that's kind of the next step in our work. Um, it's important to consider the alleys for formalized parking. We have a a deeper slide deck. That's an additional thirty slides that details each of these proposals. Um, there's a couple of house lots that we've identified along alleys that could potentially be additional um public parking facilities. And that's a recommendation in the parking management plan. Um, uh, Sixth Street, there is a discussion in the parking management plan of a fee in lieu of parking accommodation onsite. Uh, that's something that we think would help uh fund some of the on-street parking improvements for Sixth Street in the future. But probably not until you start seeing some proposals hitting your plan check desk for the mixed-use infill projects. Um, and of course, the 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 city-owned parking deck that we have introduced to your uh list of potential CIP is really important to the success of this, especially where you might hold events on Sixth. Overall, the emphasis uh on the downtown uh streetscape as a pedestrian environment is key to people walking to parking spaces there where they're parking once, rather than moving their car between every business. That's a prime uh policy from the parking management plan that we support. So um, w- this is our second meeting with you today. We've shown you some of these concepts for redevelopment in the public realm and private realm. Our next steps are getting more detailed about the timing of the implementation of each of these elements, both in the public realm and expectations from the private realm. Um, also, we need to uh begin our architectural guideline and signage uh s- uh chapters. Those are gonna be uh December and January. Uh, the signage, I think, will be most interesting to you as they're capital improvement uh items. Uh, the, really in February, we'll begin drafting the plan document. And uh, near the end of February and into March, we will uh present to council, I think, through two workshops. While we review all of this, as well as probably a Gantt chart about timing of some of these things, and also um the architectural signage and and, excuse me, architectural guidelines. So, uh, ready for questions?
Eight. That's a lot of information.
It is.
All right, uh, questions? Mr. Stevens?
Still thinking. Um, you can come back to me if you want.
I think we'll kind of handle this like we did the last one. If a question comes up and kind of bounce around each other.
I don't have anything right now.
Mr. Sutter?
Yeah, just uh one question. Um, just I wanna make sure I understand too. So kind of the plan here with Sixth Street is to take it from four lanes to two lanes, make it more walkable. So events and those kinds of things. Is that correct?
That is the intention and that is the, that is the design focus, yes.
So um, and I know you referenced Ucaipa as well, and so um, you know, that's obviously that area is north of their freeway on the ten. Um, Sixth Street is a major thoroughfare. A lot of people utilize that, uh, especially as it runs into Banning and Ramsey. Uh, was that something that was analyzed to you? If there's any concerns about slowing down traffic in that regard?
I can answer that, but we have the uh benefit of Todd Tregenza, our traffic planner, uh, who's been a part of this process all along. Uh, Todd, can, did you hear that question?
I did, yeah.
Great.
I um, I also went on camera. I don't know if you guys can see me or not, but just in case. Oh, there. Perfect.
Perfect.
Um, yeah, so thank you uh for the question. Um, the uh answer is that yes, we did consider traffic flow. Um, su- surprisingly, the 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 nature of the traffic may be different. It it is different than Ucaipa. But I was quite surprised to see that the actual volumes and the EIR for the Ucaipa project uh that I dug up were quite similar to those that we found at Beaumont and Sixth. Um, so during the peak hour, at least, on an average weekday, or or during the the days that those particular counts were taken, uh, conditions were quite similar between the two. Uh, so so that was quite reassuring, uh, because I've been out to um Ucaipa and and it doesn't feel like it's bottlenecked or anything like that. Um, that said, uh, I do understand that there are surges of traffic in in Beaumont. Um, there are surges of outbound commuters from uh the industrial kind of warehouse areas in the south southwest of of the city. Um, there are people diverting off of uh the freeway uh through uh through Beaumont. And um, I think what what we heard from the community in a view that 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 I share and I think is is reflected in in this concept is that um, regardless of of those kind of regional traffic demands that occur uh on occasion, uh, you know, there was a desire to make the main street for for Beaumont primarily, first and foremost. And so if that means that it's less convenient as a cut-through route, uh, that was a a compromise that you know, folks that we talked to were were certainly willing to accept, if not happy to to accept. Um, one thing that we heard is, you know, people were were kind of tired of of having trucks coming through town that weren't necessarily, you know, um, making deliveries to or 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 pickups to and from businesses in Beaumont. So um, I think there's, there there was a sense that we picked up on of kind of reclaiming um Beaumont and Sixth for the city. Um, but from an operational perspective, uh, the numbers that we saw, uh, the numbers that we analyzed and we did uh throw in uh, you know, escalations for forecasting as well, consistent with your general plan. Uh, we we believe that the this uh roundabout corridor and the lane reduction will will continue to work.
And another uh element that makes a lot of this work and makes sense to us and to Todd's analysis has been the proposal of an on-ramp improvement or an on-ramp uh for the Portrero Road connection. And this is uh, this enables a lot of the current truck traffic, especially from California to the ten freeway, to avoid downtown altogether. And that's a major bottleneck bottleneck point. You have turning movements stacked and waiting at what is currently, you know, one of the few traffic lights you encounter as you get in. And not only will that no longer be a stopping point, just a yield point, so traffic will flow without cease, but also, a lot of those trucks just don't come up north into downtown. Now they take Portrero up to the ten freeway uh well west of downtown. So that's another key element. Um, Todd, I think we should also address the fact that everyone's feeling it today because Pennsylvania Avenue is closed for an improvement and actually a widening that enhances connections to the south. And while um Beaumont Avenue is busy with that, it actually um uh reminds us of the role of other streets in balancing some of that load, um, especially First Street uh south of downtown, south of the ten, to accommodate some of that movement, whereas we need Sixth uh to be the core of our revitalization. It's the space we have for downtown's living room. And so that really ultimately becomes a policy choice we have to make together.
No, I agree with, I agree with those statements. And, you know, the sentiment up here, the same, was that, you know, we should be designing for what the community wants, not for cut-through. And um, you know, I I do agree with that. I think a lot of the approvals for Trera is gonna make a big difference. Uh, when Beaumont Avenue gets improved, that's gonna make a market difference, especially considering all the traffic that heads south.
Right.
You know, to 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 help it so it serves the community, you know, it'll be easier to get in and out, not uh stuck in traffic while pushing the traffic south. It's wanting to go south. Um, no, I thi- I think this plan's good. I I look forward to the circulation elements. I like the idea of a walkable downtown. So I'll I'll reserve a couple more questions if you got any. Okay. Uh, one of the things I did really like with this is I think Grace Avenue is a great opportunity. Um, I thi- I, you know, it's a, my favorite new word is boot nerf. Um, you know, that that's been a fun one. But the the opportunity to have that as kind of a mixed-use public space, you know, available for parking, available for closures, you know, that I I think that's good. But I did notice that we've got a public space on Grace Street, a public space on Sixth Street, a public space potentially, you know. At some point, are we over-saturating with these ideas of closable streets, marketing, you know, that type of stuff? Is it too much?
I think the key is, first of all, to consider the the time horizon for a plan like this. This is ten to fifteen years, and really the designs are are valid and relevant for for twenty years, because the economic analysis looks about as far as fifteen to complete the last project. Its its start would be at ten years. So um, with that, you you can support the activation of all of those, especially city-sponsored or city-directed events that draw people in. Um, so that's some of the city's responsibility in activating the Civic Center. Grace Avenue has a life of its own. So all of them are related to a development, and so they will be useful. The key to consider is the timing of all of them. They can't all happen at once, and they shouldn't all happen at once, so that we concentrate our efforts and our activation, our maintenance uh timing and schedule on perhaps Grace Avenue first, or the projects up at um the Beaumont Avenue and Eighth. Uh, and that works out, because the the thing you need to do to unlock more civic center improvements are find a campus location for the police station. You know, find a home where they can, you know, have the facilities they need to serve a a growing city, a rapidly growing city. Uh, that predicates anything that would happen at the Civic Center, so that delays that project in our you know, our our schedule of events. Uh, perhaps ten, maybe, or not ten, maybe five to seven years at least. Um, there's also uh improvements across the street on California Avenue where uh, the city's corporation yard, their their um, your improvement, excuse me, maintenance vi- uh, city vehicle maintenance facility might have a better home elsewhere. I understand that is gonna be consolidated with other city offices offsite outside of downtown. So all of these things kind of have to wait uh different amounts of time for other pieces of land to to open up, and some of that is city-directed. And so the the unrolling of public spaces uh happens uh spread out over time naturally because of those those uh involvements.
Grace Avenue feels like it's a relatively easy lift.
That's what we think as well.
Yeah.
It's it's already, it's been stub-ended for a while. It no longer has a relationship to that intersection other than something you look across. Um, I'll just say from from a visitor's standpoint, it's a moment where you can look down Sixth Street and see most of downtown. It's kind of a key moment that that allows you to sort of grab the 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 beast by the short hairs and see it all at once. And in some corners, uh, some parts of that sidewalk, you can even see Mount Gorgonio. So there, that's a perfect moment to create a really kind of landmark corner or a touchstone for the community. And, you know, it's all public realm.
Was there any consideration on Beaumont Avenue? You know, you got the Buffett bike lane. Is there any consideration of like a class four bike lane?
There is more room on Beaumont Avenue for a better cycling facility, and it is important to connect uh residents to downtown north-south with cycling facilities, probably even more of a priority in in our minds than probably even more of a priority in, in our minds than east-west along Sixth Street, especially where businesses need room for cars to park. So Todd, what do you think about a, a Class Four facility on Beaumont Avenue?
You, you know, I, I think there, there could be, the, the right-of-way. We, we didn't look at that in close detail, just because the public outreach that we did conduct, you know, pedestrian and retail storefront experience was prioritized over bicycling infrastructure. And, you know, we would have needed pretty significant community license to, to add that into the plan, I think, at this point, because we, we did also follow the recommendations of the general plan circulation element pretty closely, so. I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, it's certainly something that could be looked at, you can always upgrade your facilities, you know, through like an ATP grant program. But we, we followed the general plan circulation element, and then where deviations were made, it was really based on the feedback we heard. And out of respect for that feedback, you know, essentially, you know, bulking up the bicycle facility was not, was not something we pursued for a significant amount of time.
So that's, that's fair enough, and, you know, I don't disagree with that. But the plan gives us flexibility that, you know, if we're implementing it five years, and that was a desire at that time, we could, you know, modify the section slightly to allow for that, if there's community support for it.
Yeah, the idea is that the, the drawings in this plan are a kind of, uh, concept illustration that goes into a bid package. The contractor sees it, perhaps as a design build, and so they offer modifications at that point. And I, I don't know if there would be additional modeling analysis with that, but that's the idea of, of the use for this plan.
I know one of the challenges that we have, especially along Sixth Street, you know, small lots, small buildings, old buildings, they're not to code, so on and so forth. You know, if we're looking to, you know, essentially have somebody that's going to purchase and demolish to build new, is two floors going to provide enough sellable area? You know, is it, should we be looking at something that allows for a higher density? You know, I get that two floors might be where a comfort level is, but should we allow, you know, within the zoning or within the plan to go to, you know, three floors seems like it's considered, but potentially four?
Uh, three, uh, four stories might be, three and four stories might be difficult with the need for parking that supports residents that are living in a building like that, because the market right now is for housing and restaurants. And the, uh, so the, the size of the building right now is a mix of, or the buildings you saw today is a mix of where the community has felt comfortable through the formulation of their code in terms of, we mostly have one-story buildings, can we imagine two? I personally think three is, of course, economically more viable, but you begin to hit the limits of parking availability. And there is, there, it is not economically viable to put that parking below grade for such small projects in this environment, especially when there's so much land available. A developer can go and build single-family homes at the north end of the city. So I can imagine, and our math will probably prove capacity for one additional story on those buildings. I do not see it for four stories on lots of that size.
Okay. But two stories would seem feasible still economically, where someone could be able to
Right.
purchase, demo, and build new.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, that would require a significant amount of lot merging, and I think that's also kind of the wrap-up conversation we'd like to have with Linda Congleton, with the remainder of, of her fee and ours. You know, what, what kind of city structures and what kind of city expectations should there be for involvement or acceleration of lot merging for vacant buildings, vacant sites right now? None of, yeah, I think all of us missed the California Redevelopment Agency that was a tool for this, so.
So I mean, there's a, I guess a question for council on a policy there on, you know, what incentives to offer that would encourage the redevelopment of those parcels, emerging of those parcels.
Right. But now you have a drawing to show it.
Right. Which is great.
Thank you Todd, online for your comments on traffic and Commissioner for bringing that up. That was one of the topics, just didn't know how to exactly approach it, but Black Friday. I thought it was a lot of shopping going on at Cavazon Outlet, because, but then it wasn't, there'd be no way it could be that bad. But in the downtown area, from the sixty-ten split all the way to Highland Springs on Sixth, Eighth, and Oak Valley, and every north and south cut-through street was absolute gridlock disaster. There was some sort of incident on the, on the ten freeway. So I appreciate your comments on timing of everything, because when those incidents do happen or a train gets stuck, but Pennsylvania hopefully will be, you know, worked on and solve some of those issues. What can we do, pardon me, when there's events on Sixth Street that we're going to, you know, shut down that portion for pedestrians? And just in general, when there's these incidents, is there signage on the freeway for Cal, you know, from Caltrans, something that we can warn people, like, don't get off here? It, it took me, I ventured out, it took me an hour and a half to get from Ucaipa, I said, I'll go to Ucaipa. Took me an hour and a half to get home on, through the side streets from, you know, Cherry, following that road along the ten freeway, then to Cherry, then to my neighborhood. I couldn't make a left into my neighborhood, or else I would be blocking the intersection, so I just went straight. I said, I'll camp out downtown someplace and, you know, till the traffic dies down. But what is there, what is the option?
I, I had suggested that.
Yes, please.
Because they did this in Germany, it was a random guy who did it. But apparently he bought a few hundred cellphones and just started walking down the street with a, with a whale barrel.
I saw that.
Because the traffic data shows his moves at two miles an hour.
Right.
And ways took everybody off the roadway.
Right.
I think we're going to need a link to that article.
That was genius, yeah.
You know, it's always good to return to, at a moment like this, the, the importance of the link between the street improvement and the buildings you saw today, because they reflect two things. One of them, at a higher level, is a change in the role of downtown from a place where you, you know, benefit from a service and head on out back to your home, or you're passing through and your wallet never touches the ground here. And that change from that to a place where people are living on Sixth Street, that's, that's, that's a major change. It's something we haven't seen since the freeway was built. And with that, the streetscape design allows those people to live on, in your downtown, to really make it a true downtown, and to spend time at multiple businesses. So the street accommodates and allows people to safely do what we want them to do in the buildings we're imagining. So with that role change, we also are making a policy choice again about reclaiming downtown for that role. That means that our influence is pushing back on behavior of regional choices and drivers that are not a part of this community or are tangential to it and passing through. So to a degree, we, we need to trust that planning is there to allow these tools to create the environment we need, and then know that the downtown should not be for people who are trying to bypass a state facility. Now, I think we need to send a question up to Todd right now, which is, how does Caltrans work with a downtown to enable this to work better? And that's, that's an important question, because it in fact impacts them. Todd, do you, have you worked, or can you respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there, there are, so, so a couple of things. One, I know perhaps is kind of set in jest in terms of, you know, the, the, you know, the, the flying wagon with all the cellphones in it, or, you know, the radio flyer with all the cellphones. But, but I do think that when you make a change like that, it, it will, it will change, you know, a- as people do divert, and i- it's going to change the algorithms. And so there will be less redistribution to a roadway where, you know, Google or whoever your, your navigation provider is has, has realized that the capa- the excess capacity is no longer there. So I think that will help keep people from, from going to Sixth a- as a bypass. Now, in, in terms of the kind of incident management from Caltrans, I know that we're, we're working, separate group within GHD is also working on a project with Caltrans and RCTC on some regional kind of I- ITS, smart, you know, so-called smart freeway solutions. I, I don't know exactly the, the nature of those, but I know that changeable message signs and things of that nature are often a part of that conversation, so that's something we could, we could look into and, and come back to the group, or, or maybe send some comments back through Kyle or Carol. Other, other than that, I would, yeah, I, I would just say that, you know, look for those, those regional improvements that are planned, whether it's Pennsylvania, or I think the interchange of, of Beaumont itself, to help provide some relief from the congestion, those pinch points that you, that you're feeling right now. Because I, I don't think that those, that the congestion is not caused right now by the, the geometry of Sixth. It's, it's other regional issues that are being worked on separately. So I, I hope that, that helps answer the question, I'm not sure if I fully answered it.
Commissioner Stevens, I would, I would add that, you know, with the regional projects and the RCTC recently released their traffic relief plan, there's the big push for the rail lines to happen, there's a couple of very key road connections in Beaumont and in Banning that are missing, that are being planned right now to be constructed. I think all of those in total, and some of the energy that the county is finally paying attention to the importance of movement through the pass, I think will help to alleviate some of those concerns as we look at the project horizon on this.
And you mentioned timing, and that's where this is important, because Beaumont Avenue can, can be improved much sooner. A roundabout improves throughput where you currently have a traffic light. And all of that can happen while Protrero is getting its, you know, improvement, improved connection to the freeway, and enhancements to roads and, and key connections missing to the south of the freeway. So that, that allows you to start work on this sooner without impacting Sixth while you wait for those regional improvements. And those we haven't even mentioned, I mean, I, I know Todd is tracking a lot of these with Caltrans right now, because we're dealing with a regional problem, and we need regional infrastructure to, to help small communities survive the growth.
No, and, and thank you, I appreciate the comment on the timing, because that is the, you know, the one thing that caught my attention is the timing of all these other projects. Would a roundabout prevent eighteen-wheelers from going through a roundabout of that size, or would they still?
To my, to my knowledge, the roundabout we have designed custom for this intersection accommodates something like an eighteen-wheeler to pass through. The, the brick pattern on that is actually a drivable or mountable apron. So if you're towing a boat, you've got an eighteen-wheeler in a box behind you, that can, that can not only, first of all, it's a larger roundabout. So you can probably make that turn, the back end of it can get onto that apron.
We also want to consider as residential neighborhoods, but that moving vans, RVs, you know, all that kind of stuff still has access to utilize the road.
So my question is, is, I'm hearing timing on this, and we're talking about other things have to pop into place. What my, I'm, I'm seeing the roundabouts, okay, that's going to do the throughput on Sixth Street, great. However, if you put in just the roundabout, it's going to attract people to Sixth Street. And if you start doing the striping, cutting down the, the width of the roadway, even if it's just by striping, all I can see is anger, because that's the only north-south route that is available that's not the freeway, that you can't get on and off of. So how is the traffic study? You know, long-term, fantastic. Short-term, all I can see is a bunch of aggravation with Sixth Street being striped out and
You're looking at asphalt you can't drive on, right.
Correct.
So Todd, I, I also think this is a right, the right question for you, because this is about how do we transition to these significant changes? And they are improvements in the long-term, but we need to know about implementation in the interim.
Yeah, I mean, there's a variety of ways you could do it. You, you could do an incremental approach where you try out some of these solutions with just paint, but frankly, you guys already have some of that out there, and I would recommend potentially looking at some, some grant fund sources and just go, go right into it. I think that the, the, the type of project, I think some further evaluation, Jonathan mentioned another, another configuration, right? Where there's a center-turn lane. I, I think that there is probably a little bit more further study required and outreach required about some of the, the trade-offs. We only have a certain amount of width curb-to-curb, building-to-building. The, 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 the option that we presented is consistent with your general plan on Sixth. So, minus the roundabout, if you put that aside for a second. Same, same with Beaumont. I, I think that there is another viable option on Sixth. It's going to eat into either sidewalks or bike lanes or parking or something to get a center-turn lane, I think.
That's the segment on the screen.
A- and another evaluation is, is worth going through, where you look at those two options and make sure that you have community consensus on that, that your, your city staff is on board, that you guys are on board, council is on board. I, I think that that's worth exploring a little bit further, just the, the final geometry of that. But beyond that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I wouldn't recommend doing a, a paint version of the project. You know, we, you have experts in the room, whether, you know, there, there are members of the community, such as yourselves, representatives, you're, you're bringing on consultants that you trust, just go for it. You know, these things have been done, they can be, they, they, they can work, and they've been demonstrated to work. So I think that it's worth taking the time to make sure everyone's comfortable with the change, but I wouldn't recommend necessarily just doing a paint version of, of the improvement. I would, I would make a meaningful change that people can, can see and understand the difference that it's going to make.
Yeah, what, what you speak to is, is the right consideration, which is that if you do a striping demonstration, which GHD has participated in in other communities, and we've all seen those examples, the problem is you're getting the, the drawbacks of a, a dramatic change in your road surface without the benefits of street trees, safer for pedestrians. You're, you're getting the drawbacks without the benefits in a scenario like that, and you're frankly angering drivers and turning them off on the project. So what Todd speaks to is using the time between now and full implementation to garner more public consensus, or to, to take that or temperature, to ensure that you have enough public support to go for CIP funds and grants that often ask for that support, to do further analysis of tweaks and alternatives to the, to the road configuration you have in these, this design. And I would add to that list, you're, you're right, the roundabout is intended to connect to this road configuration. So that roundabout on its own would be a, a one-lane oddity in a four, you know, travel lane situation. So of course, don't build that in isolation with striping. It's, it's intended to ease the transition to the road design you're seeing on the screen. And the, it, it's better off focusing on Beaumont Avenue and other projects, maybe things that are outside of the public realm at Grace Avenue. And then, once Grace Avenue has begun to transition or transform, there's a success story there, then you have done enough of this other work about survey, alternatives analysis, maybe an additional course of modeling to feel confident to build this in full, without mincing about. You put in the street trees, you enhance the sidewalk in, in that way.
Just one final note on that, before we, we move on. Most of Beaumont is not considered a disadvantaged community, you know, relative to, to most definitions. There may be a way to expand that a little bit, depending on what your regional agency defines disadvantaged as. But it so happens that Beaumont, from the, the ramps to the west, you know, the, the termination of our study, the, the ten and sixty ramps, all the way to Pennsylvania, essentially the extent of, of the project that we illustrated is within your disadvantaged community boundary. So I would recommend taking advantage of that, if, if we all agree with the plan. Move, moving forward with a grant application through ATP, this is a, a shoe-in project as far as I'm concerned. You've done the outreach, you've done the planning level analysis, just go in for, for design and, and construction funds. And maybe not this cycle, maybe there's a little bit more of, of decision-making, making sure that we all feel really comfortable with it. But I, I would recommend seizing on that opportunity to get some, some state funds, because they're out there and Beaumont may as well take advantage of that, so. Beaumont may as well take advantage of that, so.
To help with the complete streets, is there a stormwater component that's discussed at all?
Uh there is room for it in this design in the form of the uh curb extensions at uh crosswalks. What you would do is you'd pull, um I I think you're seeing it on the screen now, uh. Are are you not, or um? The the curb extensions that are at intersections would basically pull back into um the the next parallel parking spot. Or or might even consume a parking spot, and that is an ideal location for infiltration, if infiltration rates are adequate or retention. And then um you're delaying and cleaning stormwater as it trickles into your stormwater system. Uh that's that's the natural place to do that. So this kind of streetscape does support your that BMP or best management practice.
Just makes applications better.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions for?
Just to comment, um one of the first things you mentioned was that the business owners. Uh I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but like the overwa- you know, you received a a positive response from the business owners, especially along Sixth Street.
Yes, yes, I was just scrolling to a slide where we summarize some of that.
Okay.
And hitting uh run on the slideshow here, this is a a tech summary. Um at the last time we presented, we actually showed some of the numbers that are behind this from the first workshop. And these meetings, the second workshop is down below, most of the people at those tables are business owners up on Beaumont. Or uh along Sixth Street, they have voted for uh what we're showing on Sixth. Uh uh they want to see uh a row of street trees and parallel parking in front of their businesses on Beaumont. Um many of them have mentioned the alley improvements, some of it's just about, can you repave my crumbling alley, but others. Recognize the importance of the alley as a space they can operate, they can set out some tables, light it up better for security. You know, sandblast and repaint their wall, throw a mural back there, this is the stuff that Redlands does, Twenty-Nine Palms has a mural program as well. Um all of these communities really make good use of alleys as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're into it.
Alright, thank you, I think this is, this is looking very uh very positive.
Thank you, so we'll uh talk to council again soon.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any uh requests to speak on this item? As this is a item to receive and file, is there a motion necessary? Alright, so we're receiving file. Alright, thank you. Alright, item C three, CUP twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven six, Beyond Beaumont Food Mart Amendment for modification of design. Of a fuel canopy, staff report please.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners, Gillian Fountain, Planning Staff. An application for a conditional use permit amendment was submitted to the city on November third, twenty twenty-three. A public notice was placed in the press enterprise and property owners within three hundred feet. Were notified of this public hearing on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Staff has not received any phone calls or written comments from the public regarding the proposed project amendment. The municipal code allows gas stations, convenience stores and drive-through car wash uses in the Sixth Street mixed-use zone. Subject to a conditional use permit, the original conditional use permit plot plan and environmental. Were approved by Planning Commission in January of twenty twenty-one. The property is zone Sixth Street mixed-use and has a general plan land use designation of downtown mixed-use. The surrounding properties have the similar z- zoning and land use designation apart from Sixth Street mixed-use residential to the north. Building permits for this project have been processed and are currently in the stages of inspections, aside from the signed permits that are pending Planning Commission approvals. The applicant is hoping to open to the public in late December of twenty twenty-three or early January of twenty twenty-four. The original project was approved for a modern style of architect of architecture. With varied roof lines and building plans planes on all elevations. The maximum building height is twenty-seven feet and the trademark beyond pin is twenty-nine feet. The originally proved fuel canopy design consisted of metal frame with acrylic coat. That will be, that would be black backlit in a white tone. The canopy provides geometric architectural aspects to carry through the modern theme. The applicant is proposing an amendment to remove the metal supports that consist of modern design that graduates towards the canopy. And will be replaced by a simple steel column of ten feet by two feet wide fiber cement board. That matches this convenience store that can be seen on site today. The mitigated negative declaration was certified for the project in twenty twenty-one. And the execution of this amendment will require adher- adherence to the mitigation monitoring program established for the project. The were, the required CUP findings can be adequately met and are included in the staff report. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing. And either approve conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven six. Subject to the attached conditions of approval or a to approve conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty-three. Dash zero seven, zero zero seven six with modifications subject to the attached conditions of approval. And direct staff to prepare a notice of determination for the applicant to file with the Riverside County Clerk for quarter. Or deny conditional use see, conditional use permit, CUP twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven six. And that concludes my presentation, uh myself and the planning manager are here for any questions and the business owner is also here.
Thank you, questions for staff? Commissioner Stevens? So, we approved the canopy, right, and it exists out there today. That that's not, right, you know, this is a canopy that's already built.
So the the canopy that is out there is what they are proposing today.
So what was approved by the city on construction drawings?
Um it is on page one oh four or one oh seven of the staff report, that is what the approval was originally.
So why, why the change, you know, I mean, the 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 entire concept was. This is a modern look, this is something unique, it's gonna stand out, and now we have something that is just mundane, that's every gas station, why? Why the change?
Do you like the applicant too?
Well, uh okay, so as applicant, well, I'll leave that for the applicant then, um I'll open the public hearing and then have you come up for that. Um, any other questions for staff before you open public hearing?
I was just a little confused on um what was originally and what the new proposed look is supposed to be.
So original approval is what's on page one oh seven of the staff report. And what is proposed tonight is on page one oh four, so the graduated um columns to the top of the canopy. On page one oh seven are now going to, are they proposing?
That's what they're requesting.
Okay, so on this.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
On the screen right now is what is there?
No, that was what, that was what was approved with uh by Planning Commission uh at the gas station when it was proposed.
So this. So, okay, I agree with Commissioner Smith that what's there, what was approved is the. More decorative sort of look and then, well, yeah, why the change to just a standard?
So that's a question for applicant, any other questions for staff? If not, I'll up, open the public hearing at seven seventeen, I don't know if you can state your name.
Michael Ramirez on behalf of Beyond Food Mart.
Okay.
Gentlemen, um the reason we're requesting this change is uh twofold, one, that. Tulip, I'm gonna use the word tulip with lattice, uh coming up from the column to the canopy top, that's part of our design. Absolutely, forward-looking, uh modernistic. We've built a number of stations that way already with these uh with the tulips per se. We ran into a problem with the manufacturer. We're dealing with a company that was in China and they went out of business, so. We're trying to find another manufacturer to uh to replicate the work that we require to complete the work. The problem is that we're trying to open the business and we had proposed to staff that. We would like to open the business and as soon as we have our our manufacturer back in place and we have all our. Uh equipment ready to go, that we would go ahead and install it. We were told at that point that 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 was not gonna be possible, that we would have to keep the store closed. So what we were told is to come in, uh present the way the columns are now and try to get it approved. And then if we want to come back afterwards, and again, this is part of our design and our and our building, so it's important to us to have it done. It's just a matter that we can't get the parts, so the reason we're coming with this application. Is cause we don't know when we're gonna find those parts again. When we do, we're gonna come back to you and ask you to re-improve what we originally installed. But that's where we're at, that's where we're before this board.
Okay. Thank you, any other questions for the applicant at this point? So. So as a fueling station, you have to have the cover on it, just because of the potential for contamination from stormwater, so on and so forth. So that's where the requirement for the canopy comes from. Um, you know, what, the staff's position, you know, that the the store should remain closed until the parts are available.
Staff's position was it, the the canopy elevations did not match what was approved. I, i- in my career, I've had commissioners call me up after. A project was approved and drove by it and said, that doesn't look like what I approved, so. Um because this is a significant change for the canopy. Uh staff did not feel comfortable with allowing them to move forward with the columns um as they were and did recommend the conditional use permit. Amendment to get that approved.
Okay, so do you have any kind of idea on when parts will be available?
We literally have someone in China looking to find somebody to manufacture, the lattice has uh lighting tracks in it. So it's not just a matter of getting some metal and putting it up, uh the lighting trucks have to be included in it, so. We have somebody that's out there trying to find a new manufacturer for it. Again, we have about six or seven other stores that are going in in Riverside County, these tulips are part of that design. So we're struggling to try to get that taken care of.
So if we approve the CUP with the revised design tonight, you know, is that? You know, are are you probably just done at that point, is that authorized and move forward, or is there the option to say, you know, the CUP is good for one year and if we can't have. Construction drawings supplies after a one-year termination, then the store would need to close, you know, is there? I mean, and that's what I hate to do, is open a business and then close it.
Right, the the the, you could add a condition on there, uh you know, I think the city in general doesn't. Not wanna be in the position to close down a business that's already operating. Um, you know, there there's also the potential, I know that the applicant mentioned doing another conditional use permit amendment. I I wouldn't recommend that because the previous design was approved. If if the commission is comfortable with the applicant's proposal tonight is maybe having a caveat that. When they do do that, that it it would have to match the originally approved design. So that they have an alternative and not have to come back before the Planning Commission if that's acceptable.
So clarify for me, so can we? Um allow them to go forward with this temporary canopy? With the understanding or requirement that it will at some point in time be replaced and have a timeframe on that?
Well, the application as it came in was to modify the the canopy columns um to what's up on my screen on page one oh six right now. As the applicant indicated tonight, I mean, their their intention is to put up that that modern. Uh column that they originally got approved, so there's, there's been no timeline indicated to staff. But if you wanted to condition that, you know, that's certainly something that the commission could do.
Okay.
At the end, I'm I'm sorry, at the end of the day, Mr. Tebal, who's gonna be the owner operator of the store. Is a resident of the community, he also has a number of other businesses here. And uh any representations we would make to this commission at this point is are sincere, we're we're trying to get to where we were. Point A with the design and it's just a matter that we're not the only ones that uh had supply chain issues along the way. So this is a very unique design, you've never seen it before, but that's the se- that's the downside of our design use.
So the challenge I think that we're facing is, you know, okay, you you're making the statement that, yes, this is what we wanna go for, this is what we wanna do. You know, and I take you at your word on it, but owners change, you know, thi- things happen, right, you know, life life occurs. How is it that we guarantee that this is going to be what's followed, you know, what's the mechanism that we look at? To ensure that, once the supplies are available, you know, that it will be put into place. I think that's what I'm trying to wrestle with, is how to best allow for the business to open. You know, so that you guys can start collecting revenue on your investment, you know, cause at the same time, I don't want a gas station in the corner sitting vacant for eighteen months. You know, and and not used. I think that's just what I'm trying to to kinda wrap my head around is what, what, you know, is there a bond to post, is there? Um, you know, is it wording in the conditions that would say that this is valid for one year unless a building permit's been pulled? To install the other one, you know, is there, wh- is what's the threshold that's reasonable?
Well, I I I I think we've seen in some other projects where they're not able to do the improvements, they do a a settlement agreement. Or some type of different separate agreement with the city, that might be something that um that we could recommend. Um that they do an agreement with the city that that establishes a timeline and when they have to do these improvements.
Okay.
Yeah, that that's what, what I'm thinking, that's what I'd like to see. In some ramification, if it's not done, short of closing the business, that doesn't benefit anybody. But if we have something that's going to encourage um the owner, whoever the owner happens to be at that point in time to. To get this look that was approved as opposed to shutting the building down, the business, it doesn't make any sense.
Hi, Commission, I'm gonna chime in for just a moment here, um if. If the intent of commission is to recommend that staff work on some sort of deferral agreement, I would ask them that you would um continue this item. To give staff the appropriate amount of time to work with legal counsel and the applicant to figure out what the. If that instrument exists, first of all, and then, second of all, if so, what that is and then how we can go about executing it. We do have improvement deferral agreements, but typically that's between the city and an applicant for public infrastructure improvements. Not for private onsite um improvements that are typically required or or approved as part of a development. So I'm a little concerned that we may not have a mechanism that exists other than some sort of condition um on the project. And as Chairman stated earlier, the city does not want to open and then have to go back and close a business either. So I'm just um for your consideration as you move through the conversation tonight.
Gentlemen, I I beg you, this this project is ready to open and I understand this is an aesthetic uh element to the project, I mean. If you've driven by it, if you drive by it tonight, you'll see how beautiful it looks the way it stands now. Um and again, I know that that's not what we had come here with, but we want to get to that point. To keep the store closed at this one, it's ready to open, everything has been signed off, it's ready to go. We can't move forward and trying to keep that business open, when there's no revenue coming in at this point, the loans have been uh. Maxed out already, so we really need your help to allow this business owner who's already a member of your community to move forward and open it. And work on something that, again, he's got multiple businesses here, he's not somebody that's just coming in, coming out, and I agree with you. Yes, it can um ownership change, but the CUP goes with the property. And therefore, if we restrict the CUP, then whoever were to come in whatever time period you may be concerned with. They would be required to do the same thing, so I'm asking you to please um approve this. But put a condition that we need to work with staff or the city attorney to come up with some alternative uh. A fee in lieu of, if it's not possible, or a timeframe on that, so that we can get this done.
Question for staff, what kind of timeframe do you need? Cause I think we'd like to see this resolved as quickly as possible, but there's some realities of of. What kind of timeframe you're going to need to do this, i- is this such that we could move it for the next meeting or you need more time?
I think the next meeting would be appropriate, but that's January tenth, um we do have two items on that, the continued Beaumont Point project. Um and then we have a a conditional use permit, so um that that meeting is. Pretty well impacted, uh but we could certainly accommodate if that's what the Planning Commission would like to do, staff can definitely work on that. Uh during the that time period if that's your your pleasure.
Gentlemen, I implore you, we we, every day that we stake close at this point, this is, we've been waiting, I think. When this first came up, which has already been about a month, we were kinda getting ready to open. And so we're asking, um I think uh just given the fact that we're bringing in the parts from China. If we could get an approval and give us a twenty-four month period to fabricate it, get a new designer and get it installed. I I would say that that would be fair if we could, if we could do that. You know, we have to ship the product over here from China and that takes a little. You know, we have to ship the product over here from China and that takes a little while. Some of those things are out of our control.
So my my thought, real quick, if I might, um, twenty-four months to complete installation seems reasonable. Um, but I would be wanting to almost hear this come back, you know, if a building permit has not been pulled within a twelve-month period, that you would need to come back to council and explain why that hasn't been the case. And if it's not done in twenty-four months, then we may be looking at a case where, you know, we would be asking the business to close.
I would ask you to give me eighteen months to get the permit pulled because again, uh, sometimes pulling a permit is a little bit of a trick here as well, not in the city, but anywhere. And then uh completion within within the twenty-four months.
So again, that that puts staff in a position or the city in a position where we're gonna have to come back and potentially close a business that
Is generating revenue.
Well, not just that, but I mean, they're, you know, visible in the community and whatnot. So I would be more inclined to um to suggest maybe posting a bond or cash in lieu um that we would have until um the the originally approved design was was constructed. That would be a more feasible
Okay.
A more feasible um, I think, option.
So are the mechanics in place now that if we were to approve this conditionally upon the bond being posted? We have the mechanics in place that we could do that without having to go?
Yeah, that that's a pretty typical way of accommodating um situations like this or similar on a development project is we can we can request a bond or or a cash deposit.
That makes that makes great sense and and if if something happens and you can't find somebody uh that can manufacture sure this, you can certainly come up with something that's reasonable alternative. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. But is that something we could move on so that we could get an approval at this?
Well, it's it sounds like that's something that we could add as a condition on it, that that we'd be to provide cash in lieu or a bond in order to, you know, with this CUP and then be able to take action on um tonight, that's.
And could we and could we add something to the extent of going back to the previously approved project? And at that point, we would not have to come back and pull another CUP?
I think that would be the idea.
Reasonable, yes.
Okay. We would appreciate that. That would take some time.
Question for staff, would this um bond and what, you know, the work that staff needs to do for that, would that delay the opening of this gas station?
Well, so the way we would craft the condition is prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the applicant's gonna have to provide us with documentation of the cost so that we can determine what an appropriate um cash bond or or cash in lieu. Um, the 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 concern that that I think staff has is e- even getting a cash bond with the issues with getting these materials, it would be difficult for the city to um step in uh with that cash bond or the in lieu fees um at at a later time to install those.
Right, the financial incentive is essentially if it's cash in lieu, that it's it's held until the improvement's done.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I think that's kind of where, you know, the cash bond is, I think, or a bond is a little bit different. I think the the cash in lieu, I mean, that's that's a significant sum of money.
Right.
That would be released once the the improvement is completed.
And bonds are typically harder to get performance on anyway, so
Right.
we we have done a number of um sort of cash deposits into an escrow account
Right.
on certain projects where the money is held until
Right.
completion of whatever the issue is to the satisfaction of the city.
All right, that's that seems reasonable, that seems reasonable to me, because I mean, there's the you've stated the desire to complete it. We've we've got the mechanism there to ensure that, you know, like I said, if life happens, that, you know, something is there to push that forward. And then we end up with a project that you wanna build and we end up with a project that we wanna see. So, you know, and I think that's kind of the reasonable accommodation.
Just just going back on what the applicant said, um, you can open up before the end of the year from what you said, correct?
We'd like to open up uh before Christmas.
Does the applicant, does the applicant agree that, you know, a cash bond would be amenable?
Yes, as long as we're talking half a million dollars or something along those lines. I think those tulips and the improvements and things of that nature, uh, is a is a number that we can show you what we would contract for. And then you guys can kind of go from there.
Okay.
So basically, the the work that staff has to do to make this happen is not gonna delay more than four weeks or six weeks. I mean, you know, he can still open up, like you said, he's ready to open. Is that the goal? Like, how how much time is this gonna take?
Well, the applicant will need to provide us documentation of what those costs would be to do those improvements and then then we would work with um the deputy city manager.
And you said you've built these in other places recently?
Yes.
So you've got relatively recent costs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Dos Lagos, uh, that facility there uh is open with the tulips. Uh, Rialto off of Alder at the two ten freeway, that facility has to as well, so we can show you that.
So, you know, the costs are reasonable, then it's a matter of just agreeing on it and then providing, you know, the the cash for the escrow account, and then we can move forward. Okay. So, uh, you know, with that, I think, you know, we would add that as the condition that the applicant will provide, you know, a cash bond in the amount of the improvement to be released upon, I guess, construction of the canopy that was originally approved with the entitlements. Does that capture intent for everybody?
And that, once we come and ask for that approval, we can go based on the plans that were approved and the previous CUP that was approved.
So I I've got two conditions that I've crafted um prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a cash in lieu or bond in the amount of the original canopy improvements shall be posted uh and not released until the original uh until the construction of the uh original approved uh columns have been completed. And then uh the other condition would be at the time that the original column design materials become available, a conditional use permit amendment will not be required if the columns match the original design from the two thousand twenty-one planning commission approval.
Okay, I'm comfortable with those. Okay.
So can we make that motion? Reference to that?
No, we will.
You can move as staff.
We'll reference it.
Chairman Smith, we need to close, open a comment.
Yes, I know we do. Do we have any uh other public requests to speak on this item?
I have no written. Rudy, do we have any callers on the line?
I have no callers on the line.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing then at seven thirty-six.
Thank you.
Any further discussion up here, or otherwise we would entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve this with the conditions that were referenced having to do with the cash in lieu and uh subsequent completion as originally designed.
I'll second.
All right, there you have a motion and a second. Uh, vote, please.
Mr. Southard?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. All right. Right, item C four, Plan twenty twenty-three dash ten thirty-three for consideration of a sign program for the Beyond Food Mart at eleven eighty-nine East Sixth Street. You're back up again, in a moment. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Gillian Fountain, Plan Staff. An application for a sign program was submitted to the city on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The municipal code allows for sign programs under section seventeen point zero seven point zero three zero point L for specific developments that may modify rules regarding si- uh sign size, height, illumination, spacing, orientation, and other non-communicative aspects of signs. The original conditional use permit, plot plan, and environmental for this project were approved by Planning Commission in January of twenty twenty-one. The applicant's sign program addresses the wall signs and internally illuminated channel letters and a gas price monument sign. The applicant is requesting to allow three logo signs on the north-facing side of the building and one logo sign on the south-facing side of the building. There will be two car wash signs from for the entrance and exit of the car wash, one on the north-facing side and one on the south-facing side. The signs will be internally illuminated channel letters that vary in height, but have a maximum height of fifty-six inches and a hundred and forty inches in width. The applicant has proposed one internally illuminated double-faced gas price monument sign located on the northeastern corner of the lot and will be sixty-four inches in height and a total length of a hundred and fifty-six inches. A comparison table is provided in the staff report to show the allowances that are requested. Staff has reviewed the proposed sign program in relation to the size of the project, buildings in circulation, and has determined that the proposal is in scale with the project as discussed within the staff report. This item is not required as a public hearing, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Plan twenty twenty-three dash ten thirty-three. This concludes my presentation, and if you have any further questions, I can answer, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
No.
The food signs, the Fat Burger and the Buffaloes, yada, yada, yada. So business, let's say Fat Burger decides that, you know, it's not good for them, they wanna have, I know Chick-fil-A wouldn't go in there because it's not their own, but let's say they wanna come back in. So whoever would be the new tenant taking up that stall, they would be required to do an amendment to the sign plan or the sign program for their logo signs?
Based on the sign legend, so we could um we could add a caveat in the sign program that just says that it it would have to match within the same envelope.
Okay, because I I, in general, I would say I don't have any objections to the sign program as presented, just to you don't wanna end up where it's three beyond signs that are on there, you know, that that kind of a thing, so.
Um, it does reference on page one fifty-two of the staff report that should a sign be removed, it is the tenant's responsibility to patch all holes um and for it to be replaced to match the existing.
Okay. All right. All right, do we have, let's see, is this a public hearing? No. Do you have any requests to speak on the item, the applicant? All right. Any questions or discussion from commission? All right, we will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Plan twenty twenty-three dash ten thirty-three for the Beyond Beaumont Food Mart Sign Program as presented.
I'll second. Okay, you have a motion and a second. Vote, please.
Commissioner Southard?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Chairman Smith?
Yes. All right, there you go. Uh, item C, planning manager comments? Item D.
Thank you very much. Uh, happy holidays to all of you. Thank you for all your help.
Happy holidays to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited to buy my gas closer to home.
Don't forget, there's hand-packed thrifty ice cream in there.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I I have new city council updates. We only just met on the twenty-ninth, so um I have been providing the Planning Commission with our DRC, our Planning Commission, City Council agendas. We, our DRC for tomorrow's canceled. We we have some items items in, but we're waiting for payment. So we anticipate that at the first of the year, we'll we'll start seeing some heavy uh Development Review Committee agendas. Uh, as mentioned previously, on deck for January twen- uh, January tenth, we have the Continued Beaumont Point Project and um we'll have a conditional use permit for a jujitsu uh operation in an existing building. We've got some other applications that will be coming to the Planning Commission within the next few months, which include um a conditional use permit for low drag ink. Uh, it includes a spray booth um where they spray guns, I guess, to customize them. So it'll be a conditional use permit for a spray booth and handling of firearms. We also are, uh, we've been working on the resubtle for Maya Plaza, which is on Louis Estrada and Beaumont Avenue to add um some other fuel alternatives there. So I think they're getting closer and we anticipate that that that'll be coming forward uh as well as Beaumont Village, which is on the northwest corner of Oak Valley Parkway and Beaumont Avenue that has a major uh anchor tenant and then several pads uh along both frontages. And then uh we just completed review uh of a resubtle for the Richardson's RV, which will, you know, it's Richardson's Camping World um for the um along Sixth Street. So those are some items that are gonna be coming up to the Planning Commission soon. On February twenty-eighth, we will have um the Orchard Logistics Project, so that's the former Dowling Ranch. Uh, that environmental impact report out is out right now for its forty-five day public review. So um we are anticipating having a second meeting in February, which would be February twenty-eighth.
Can we make sure that, you know, for the noticing on that one, because I know there's a different requirement for a special, that it's noticed as if it was irregularly scheduled?
Yes, so generally speaking, we do notice as if it's regular. Where the special versus the um regular comes in, the um system that we use for the agenda software, um, the way it's written in the back in the background, that special provision or whatever, we are unable to save that or to change that. And so the city clerk is working on um is working on that with the software or whatever, the website that we use to to publish that. But everything else as far as um newspaper noticing, public noticing, mailing, um scheduling, agenda release, all of that follows a typical regularly um or the regular timelines that we would for any other regular meeting.
Okay. I was just having the weekend to review the material is helpful.
Okay, understood, yes.
Um, and uh like I said, with with some of the things we have on deck, we don't have anything scheduled for the twenty-fourth, but I did wanna poll the commission and see um your availability in case we do have items.
For January?
January twenty-fourth.
So we have January tenth, that's already on the schedule.
Yep.
Second, yeah, I'm available.
I've already got plenty of questions on my calendar, so.
Works for me. Works for me.
For the twenty-fourth, apparently I just put in for.
Quorum, I'm good.
Second and fourth.
And for the Planning Commissioners Academy, so I have Commissioner Cooley all set up. I I think I'm still waiting to hear from Commissioner Southard if.
Should have you answer this week.
Okay, and um I'll work with Commissioner Gray on um getting hi- getting him registered as well. And uh that's all I have tonight.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
With with my disability.
Took a while to get the phone up. I'm available on that date in January.
All right, well, no further items. We will adjourn until January tenth at seven forty-seven. Thank you.